All set. All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Sumner Solid Waste Committee. Meeting to order for December fifth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-one P M. I know some folks are probably expecting the selectmen's meeting. But we're gonna do that afterward. You were kept that agenda light, but we wanted to get. This on here so we could actually get together and meet. And we have folks from Sumner here to represent. Azalea Heather and I are on the board for the. Solid Waste Committee. I got elected the chairman somehow. So on the ground in his last year since.
I think you'd win the vote again.
We should revote at any time. Would you guys mind introducing yourselves for the? Record here and so.
Sure, I'm Joel Chapman. Um, I live on White Mountain, Sumner.
Wonderful.
Bill Savage feels ill-rose on that.
Perfect.
Jesse Wall for Calum.
All right. So financial update. Cam was kind of put this together for us. She mailed it around.
Well, yeah, I sent out the financials, basically the balance of the uh. The Sumner Buckfield Sumner Solid Waste Account. Um, since the start of this year. Uh. As well as kind of two breakdowns on an expense summary because the way the trio works, once I close the books. I saw some transactions from last year that are in this year's numbers. So the overall uh. They gave you the overall budget number on the last page for the unextended, unextended balance. Couple of the big things that I've noticed over the last several months is uh. We're either. Getting rid of a lot more solid waste or solid waste seems to be getting more expensive to get rid of. Um, I think we're. We went over budget last year, which is why we um. Increased the budget this year. Uh, but. If things keep. Going the way they're going, we might have to have a slight increase on it next year as well, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Uh, we do still have the the savings account. So last year I had to pull. Twenty-three thousand nine hundred two dollars fifty-three cents out of the savings account to offset the difference. Um, because the money in that account is the same as the operation is sixty-five thirty-five. Both of our towns money, so. Basically, if we go over budget according to the agreement, that's where the money comes from. So realistically, on paper, because we keep this separate. The solid waste budget for our two towns should never go over because we tell you what you need to pay. We've. Expand what's, I mean, we expect we pay all the bills based off of what we collect. And then if you do go over, this will offset it. So it comes up to basically zero. I think everybody might have. Copy of it, but. Everybody who is here, there's currently a hundred and ten thousand six hundred and two dollars and thirty-three cents in that um, in that account. Looked into that account is also swap shop donation, which I track on a general ledger account separately. Um. Which I don't have a current, so if they end up needing something, I pull it out of that general ledger account and then deduct it from the account because it's money that. Was brought in through donations. We put it in this account to keep it separate from everything, and then we transfer it back in when we write checks. Other than that, if any of you have questions, I know if you're all fairly new to this, so. Feel free to fire away.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
No, currently on the finances.
Big things at at the transfer station that we're probably gonna have to look at in the coming future. Tobacco that's over there. I'm pretty involved with the transfer station. This is getting pretty tired. Currently, the transfer station. Rents that from the town of Buckfield for seven thousand dollars a year. I just don't know how many more. Years it has in it. So it's something that the committee might want to discuss in the near future to figure out plans. As to what we're gonna hit the. I'm gonna. Purchase something used to have them there specifically for it and not rent it, or if we need to look at financing something in order to do it. It would have to go to the voters, but. Just want to put it on your radar.
Uh, could you give us sort of a a breakdown of how things uh. Work. Cost-wise, as far as. We have the iron section and all the different dumpsters for the different things, and then we have all the. The bulk waste, and if any of the people from Sumner are are watching, maybe you could. Uh. Expose on ways that. Just in the way that we visit the transfer stations, we could maybe shave off, you know, a dollar here or there.
So. Do you know the numbers on that, what we're getting back for metal and I don't know.
I think, and this is before my, I I I think the transfer station used to do a lot of like. Sorting glass and plastics and stuff a little bit better, and we used to, we used to bring in revenue from that. Over the last few years, we haven't, we haven't gotten anything other than cardboard. And uh, iron, which does offset. Uh. As far as the disposal side of it. If it can go into the compactor. We should, because when we put it in O B W, which is that oversized waste bin, that costs more. Um. It's weird because like, we paid a hall and then we pay the facility that accepts it for the tonnage. So like. Your, your wood goes to re-energy, I think, resource waste. Um, and then they, we we pay certainly three per ton. Which has gone up in the last several months. Um, tires are crazy. You pay a lot of money for your tires. Um. But as far as if you could recycle cardboard. According to cardboard, um, definitely do so. Don't throw the compactor because we don't make a ton of revenue off of it, but. Whatever comes into that account to help offset anything that, you know, we might go with. Um. Some very limited areas that we can really. Save, but the big thing is that oversized waste does cost more.
Is there anything preventing us from recycling glass again? Because I mean, glass is heavy. I could shave some dollars out of what we're spending.
We have to, I have to look into it. I don't know why they stopped.
Yeah.
I I don't have. It's when I heard the dollars weren't there for it, they they it was costing more. To uh push it and. I mean, whatever it was.
Get rid of it. That's my recollection as well. It's glass, plastic. There were several items and on the list it just wasn't.
Yeah, when Brad was here, he was letting me to try and and and. Pull in some money from the plastic, but it ended up not really.
Yes.
Turning into anything that. Was gonna be worth it.
Right.
I did. Oh, that was one of the things, um. The the transfer station is now a paint care collection site. So every time you buy paint, you pay a. A nominal fee based off the size of whatever paint container you have, which goes into that program to recycle it. Um, so. There, I have brochures. I'll actually give you some. You can take them back to the town office, but uh. Certain types of paint can be dropped off in that bin that's next to the waste oil, and then whenever we get a full bin, we send it off. It doesn't cost us anything. It's just, it's convenient for people to be able to do that because. A lot of people, even like latex-based paint, they just set them outside them, dry and throw them in the compactor. Now they can use. But you know, they don't have to let them dry. They can go put them in there. They recycle what they can and they dispose what they can. It's not ending up in the landfill.
Of course. Anything else on the finances?
You know. We do have a budget coming up.
Yeah, we'll have to.
I mean, currently, we have, we have twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars left in the unexpendable balance. Two twenty-six was the overall budget. So. We're just under, under fifty percent. Yeah, because this is fifty-four. So we're, we're on track, but. I get nervous the last six months of the year every year. It's just, you know, you never know.
Yeah, spring cleanup.
Spring, yeah, spring cleaning is usually when.
Yeah.
The bills get bigger. Right now, it's, it's, it won't be so bad throughout winter because people don't. Dispose of a lot of stuff, but. I think we'll be okay. Not that we wouldn't be okay, because we do have the money to offset it, but if we cannot happen to that and utilize it for other things that we might need, then. It's preferable.
Something. Yeah, and I added a note about tobacco for the next agenda, so we can. Start researching that, yeah, plans. Well, I'm sure we'll want to come up with something before the next budget. Yeah.
When do we uh do the retail, do the towels for populations for our usage?
We just did one, right?
So we just, they just did the census. Um, I looked at the numbers for Sumner and Buckfield, and it's still, this, this, the split is. Still right there.
Yeah, I just didn't change.
Um, because that was one of my concerns too, when I, when I was looking at the agreement. When we first started talking about it a while ago.
Yeah.
Um. With the split and what we found was, because it hasn't changed much.
All right. Any other questions on the finances? Or another one? All right. The ten-year agreement.
Oh, yeah.
So this, I believe it used to be a three-year.
It's me which. No, the, the solid waste.
At ten. But we can amend it along the way, sure.
Yeah, there's amendment terms in here too. We're currently running on an extension of the previous one, which the last committee meeting. Um. You voted on to, the committee voted to continue until we came up with an agreement. Uh, no, nothing in here has changed outside of uh. The main waste energy thing, which I discussed at your select board meeting. Obviously, M W A changed to M W B. Uh, and then I had to, we had to account for. The fact that we had a bipartisan select board. So what they decided to do was. Pick three of them that we didn't have to have five, you know, I mean, we kept everything even across the board. So. Uh, there's five signature lines for Buckfield to accept the agreement, but. In the end, you're looking at the three that are currently on the, the community. So you'll still have the same agenda numbers on the side. And I know both of us are gonna have to vote it. Each board is gonna have to vote their select board meeting through sign us, which I have on our agenda tonight. Um. Pending any questions or concerns that. You three might have.
Are we caught up now with our four with as far as?
Um, there's one quarter, if one quarter got missed somehow, um, I spoke with Sue. I I went over to the town office and. I I gave her an updated input.
Only she.
Yeah, and explained to her um, what was going on. So she said she would take care of that at one year, the next meeting or whatever. Um, and then you'll be all good because the next, it's the next one that would be due after that would be the second quarter of the channel, September, so. You guys read on there.
Well, I think I have to compliment you on the. All the transfer station, the size doing a job. Uh. Everything has a place to go. And uh, it keeps place neat, kept up. Yeah, it's, it's a great facility. One of the best I've seen around. Beautiful, yeah.
For the rural community. I've seen some.
You know, yeah.
We also mentioned, I mean. Realistically. We kinda, I mean, in my opinion, haven't made here in regards to being able to dispose of certain things, because I mean, I, I live in Gray. And other communities, and it was really expensive to get rid of some stuff that. You know, you pay for it one way or the other. You pay for it in the budget, you pay for it for a few years until you want to get rid of something and somebody else can get rid of it, but. In the end, it's, it's simply a full land. You take care of your stuff and you get out. Aside from the tires, which we have to do, it's so expensive to get rid of the tires. You know, as long as you stick to the two a day and. It's maintainable.
All right.
So the, the tobacco piece, oh yeah, that um. That doesn't leave, it just stays, we rented from you guys, but do you guys use that thing for other purposes or?
No, we have a, we have a loader down um, that we use for the stuff we need to do.
Yep.
And tobacco stays at, at transit. Can I say that it's never been pulled away to use for a job? Like, I I wouldn't feel comfortable saying no, but for the most part, it never leaves. Unless it has to come down to. Public Works to be fixed, which last year we replaced the fuel tank. Um. Bushings in the front end were completely blown out, so we had to do some fabrication to get that. Set back up. I think the, the biggest issue is, is what is. Tobacco wasn't designed to pull. Some of those bins when they're freighted right down, and it's been used for many years for that purpose, so. The solution is have them call Public Works every time they need to pull a bin, which. All right, it's. You never know what they're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Or when they can get down there, so. I mean, I definitely think we've gotten our money's worth.
Yeah, sure.
Do you remember when roundabouts that one was purchased?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, done a, a capital, I could look it up, but I don't have.
Yeah, a long time ago.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, I actually. Probably wasn't new.
No.
Yeah.
I, I probably have it sitting in my office. Amongst all my forward.
So any questions on the agreement? I mean, it's.
No, it's been that way. Yeah, I went through the entire thing today. I didn't.
Yeah. It works well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure there's some towns that would. Wish they were in our system.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, trying to, trying to get rid of waste now is.
Who? Yeah, our friend lives in South Paris, so he says ridiculous, we should have to jump through. Was.
Yeah. All right. Transfer station stickers. We were chatting about an annual color change to. Try to keep track of who's dumping it to dump. Right?
I mean, this is an ongoing issue. That's been discussed a million times. Um. I know, I hear everything from, well, they don't check, they don't check stickers to, you know. Whatever. You know, how many vehicles have been sold in town? Do you get your sticker when you sell your car? Um. But with that said, it'd be easy. I'm not saying one way or the other, what I feel. I, it's just, you gotta think those red stickers have been used for. At least ten years.
Hmm.
Um. Everybody who works there is gonna be covered by to the sticker. If it does change every couple of years, then at least, you know, oh, it's a new sticker we get, uh, but. I've got probably a lifetime supply of red stickers. I just, I don't know how to. I don't know how to control it, other than I stand at the gate and I don't have time to stand at the gate and check stickers.
Okay, yeah, we don't really have anybody to lease it. Yeah. But I'm, I'm sure that some of us have seen. Trailers pull up, perhaps. Full of construction debris. Yeah, you know.
Did it come from Buckfield or Sumner?
Or neither? Is this me?
At, at the Buckfield's line board meeting, I'm in favor of ordering. At least blue or yellow or whatever color you think will stand out. Karen has a lot of stickers. He said he, you know, has a ton of stickers, red ones. They can sit, they're not gonna go bad, but I think. Even if we change the stickers in each town, when you either register to vote or pay your taxes. Then that would be the time to say, hey, here's your sticker, you know, keep track of the number. Some, I mean, that, to me, that's very simple, but I think it's time. We have to do something because. I, for one, have seen people there that I just am convinced. Not for neither town. Um. And maybe they do own property in either newer town for our town, and they're here just at certain times of the year. We, that could be possible. But the issue just goes round and round, and at least with the new sticker. We stand a chance.
Yes. Should we put a date on them? Could we do that? Would that be too troubling?
My thought process was, and I don't want to add an added expense. I don't know. I haven't looked to see how much the stickers cost. But I'd say a significant, do you guys do rapid rental?
Yes.
Okay, so those would be the only ones that would have to come and exit, but if you come in to register your vehicle. The sticker gets, gets, you know, so there would be that offset like every two years before everybody's changed over the new sticker, just like the state inspection stickers, but. You know, you come in, you register, you get the new, whatever current one it is. And. I mean, everybody that comes in to do motor vehicles, as long as I clerked, know, hand them a new dump sticker for each one of their registrations, then we shouldn't have problems.
Right, we just don't want to tie it to that alone. So if they own property, register their car elsewhere, we could still.
Well, if they, if they, if they own property, all they'd have to do is come into the town office, right?
Look up. Do their due diligence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like the people who use rapid knowledge, or they can call the town office, you can confirm it, you can send it off to them.
Right. Yeah. So in favor of that.
It'd be a little bit easier for Weldon and I to kind of police the guys too, because if we're doing that and going through that effort, it might. They might be a little more attentive to it. The rest of their things just.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
They might as well be invisible.
Yeah, there's kind of no point.
To it, you know what I mean?
I don't know what to spend anymore. I'm pretty sure they've been red since my childhood.
I just, I, I know that, you know, the taxpayers get frustrated because they're paying taxes for the, the transfer station, then when they see a budget decrease because our. The disposal costs are going up, you know, they, they come to us and they say, why, why do the costs keep going up and? You know, that's, you talk about saving dollars, you know. If you had ten cars a month that don't belong in Buckfield or Sumner, dump a trash out, I mean, it's, they're going to fill up the compactor. Hundred fifty-four dollars to haul it off, plus a fifteen-dollar forty cent surcharge, plus however much it weighs, time, story that rated, get rid of that load, so. It's a lot of five-hundred-dollar bill.
Yeah. And that's not going down anytime soon.
And if it's sheet rocking shingles, it's even more.
Oh, mama.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be helpful to have an idea so that action could be taken tonight about the general estimated cost of these stickers?
I'm gonna do that. I can do that later.
Okay.
Uh.
But it can't be more than. I mean, there's two longer.
I mean, at the end of the day. You, you guys have a savings account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you want to take your money from the savings account, pay for new stickers and implement it on such and such a date. You don't use January first, but then we just. Now, you know, even if it's six months from now and the start of the new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Um, right, that'll give me time to.
Roughly, yeah.
So what are we talking, uh? Well, once I order an initial batch, I'm assuming I can just reorder in, in sequence, just like I would checks.
Yeah.
Until, because I mean. You might have. A thousand, or we, you know, we might have two thousand residents, but we have two thousand residents. But then we do have, you know. People who own other properties, since people own multiple vehicles.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't typically put trash in my wife's car, but.
Yeah.
If I have to.
So. We could make a motion to.
Or.
Take, take that.
Make a motion to utilize funds from the, the solid waste savings account. To pay for new stickers, and if you want to fancy it up, find out what color.
Something gray. Something new.
So careful.
I don't know, I was looking, I was looking at this hat, it was pretty bright.
Oh, yeah, now we're talking. We're talking. All right, so I'll make a motion that we utilize the solid waste saving account to purchase new stickers. To. Send out, uh, what's the appropriate term for that, to distribute? Starting, starting June first or July first?
Sounds like a bad motion.
Under a new color, thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Any discussion on that?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Just from past history, I will tell you that there. If you don't decide right now that it's two per household or one per household sticker, that that issue will come up. Um, so that I think should be decided tonight, either one or two stickers per household and.
Per vehicle.
Or, or per, right, some families have seven people, so you're gonna give seven sticker, you know, I don't know, I mean, you.
They never did settle on that, which is.
It has been an issue in the past, so that might be. Something to be decided.
Three?
I was just thinking, if you have a seventeen-year-old, you want to really dump his vehicle.
Yeah, mine does.
You can get my condition.
So I'll, I'll amend that to include three stickers per. Household. Some. Out, just got something again, yes.
And then the second thing would be, how is it just gonna be Buckfield distributing them through the system, or are you gonna give some? To Sumner, distribute along with their.
Yeah.
Yeah, the shocks guy, I think that's when they wrote.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Spreadsheet based off the new numbers. To share with Sumner, the, the town clerk over there, so that. We can have a record of, I don't know how they do it right now, but I have a spreadsheet with all the numbers and I plug them in. I think right now my spreadsheet says. All in red, it says Sumner, and I don't know who has those stickers. I just have. And that may have been something that Sue used to track and that shared with tracking, but I, I don't know where it's at now.
Yeah, I don't know.
And that's another thing, because our records aren't that great with that. We're starting fresh as we move forward.
Yeah. Yep, that's great. Do I need to amend that to include the?
No.
Now, if you feel, everybody's all right with that?
It'll happen in the discussion.
All right. And it's been seconded by Heather. Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Is there a I, is there a?
Hi.
You raised your hand.
Joel. Nice, unanimous, thank you. That's progress right there.
Yeah.
All right, now, swap shop guidelines. Are included in here.
I know, this is, this has come up at our. Our meetings, um, and with all this turnover in Buckfield and. I want to thank the swap shop volunteers, because I think they had to self-police themselves for the last three and a half years, but. Um, I just recently got a list for the volunteer, started looking into it. I have an old copy of. General operational guideline and rules for, for volunteers, uh, that. I don't think have been utilized as far as the acknowledgement. Um, I think there's an application if they want to volunteer. I don't think that's been reviewed here too. Um. But reading over this, I don't know if it's for you, you have the time to read it or if it's for you. It's very. Strict.
Yeah.
You know, volunteerism is, is hard enough as it is. I don't know if this is something that needs to be. Reworked. But. I wanted to at least put it out there, because again, there's a lot of new faces here, so. It's something that should probably be looked at.
Absolutely. Well, where, you know, if it's written, it should be done, right? So some of these things do seem pretty. Stringent.
You know, in, in, in our uh. Meetings in Buckfield, I know it's, it's come up about the monetary donations and something about the electric bill or whatever. That, that says any and all monetary donations are used to assist with the costs associated to maintain the swap shop. Like. Recently, they raised a bunch of money. They replaced some windows that needed to be replaced. You know, the donation money that was brought in was used to, to pay for those costs, and then I still have, you know, they still have a running balance that was in there, so when they need stuff like that, that's where that money could come from, but. I don't, outside of this, I don't see anything, aside from that, if you want to let it go. I pay it every month.
The past was the past, the features new and good, bright and shiny.
Yes.
Or just, uh. We hold each other hard.
We hold each other hard for the end, long time swap shop volunteer. Uh, I, I've been looking this over and, and, and using my pen, I would suggest a number of minutes.
I wonder if, uh, we should get together with some volunteer things, swap shop and go over this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I just rework it for the next meeting and. Vote on it then, because there's quite a bit of stuff in here.
It's expensive.
Yeah, yeah. Would you be in favor of that?
Absolutely.
Alright. Yes.
So perhaps copies of these could be made available to all current. Swap shop volunteers, and then that would give them some time ahead of time to go through and. Make the edits that Nate perhaps would suggest, and then if they're not able to attend.
Yep.
A meeting that you have, then they could just.
We can submit those.
Yeah.
I also, I agree with you, uh, swap shop volunteers. I've been there two years, the first time I've seen it.
I can't, see?
I'm not very on the explains fair supervisor. At this point in time, we don't even know who before made a risk. Um, we're here, there's been a change to get, uh. Uh, we get information, notes left on the table, the things have changed, you don't know where they're from. So and, uh, we'd really like to have some work done. Um, on it. It's very important, uh, well, these are all volunteers, right here, um.
This, oh, you have to say that we have almost all ones, almost all of the Wednesday crew is here. Thanks for your show, guys.
Sure. I'm excited about what's going on, and so. Uh, would love to be.
And we have apologies for not coming down and talking to you guys sometimes.
Getting a little busy.
I don't even know when, once they have the time. But, so, I.
Get to your calendar, we are playing.
I mean, I have a list of volunteers, there's a bunch of notes on it. Uh. Dwayne had provided to me. When I received that letter from, from him, um. I would like to sit down with, with people and kind of get a better understanding of how it was being run, because the people come to me and I, I just don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Sandra?
Is there a time or may I go make copies of that to give to these folks and they can make a reference, we have some.
Do you have? Okay.
You want more copies?
I have papers.
You know, keep that idea too, I don't think, well, the way to talk it out, there's like playing here. One, two, three, four, five, or six. They're made.
Oh, that's the whole packet, so you can take the whole packet and everything. But the, the agreed, uh, the agreement, the, uh. Volunteer.
It's the very last two pages.
Yes, you knew what I was trying, you had a long day.
Yeah.
Right, right. I think so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, that's very good. Situation about shop. There is, um. Um, for some reason, they're not allowed to deal with hats. And gloves. And I just don't understand why. I mean, children losing that all time, and why is it with their hats, it's more important thing and gloves, though, why are they not allowed to be there?
I don't know. Yeah. I'm not sure. That's a good question.
Yeah, it's. Does, then.
Is it because they go to?
Yeah, but would any of our volunteers be privy to that? Yeah, um, it's not outlined in this rule guide at all, but there was some personal authority made and then posted online to the community, saying that those items were no longer accepted. Hats, gloves. Bras, undergarments, which some of them are understandable, but some of them are literally, there's drives for them for the school, and they usually are gone as soon as we get them in. So there's, that's why we're, we're struggling with, we want someone to find leadership, because there's some. Self endowed authority that is, there's some battling going on, because we don't know who's technically in charge, and there's just liberties being taken.
Well, shit. Because why should we give out socks, but not gloves? Yeah, that's kind of. Kind of weird, you know?
So maybe when we review, we can outline exactly what is accepted and what isn't.
That would be very helpful. Thank you very much. And I think it's, it was important for any bilingual communities, the swap shop shop or middle, you get stuff at the swap shop, you wash it before you wear it, but I'm saying. Right, that's, that's how, it's great, when we get it, yeah, yeah.
It's all the swap shop.
We're gonna have rules, we'd like to, to at least have some coordination on, on who's making the rules.
Yeah.
And maybe the supervisor, coordinator and the two supervisors, uh, should be making the rules.
Yeah. So does anybody know in the past? How it was decided who the coordinator was?
Well, I have no idea, I, I don't know.
He used the word self endowed, and I think that is, or self appointed, and I think that's kind of it.
And, and I only ask because actually, some just asked the question about who decides that, and then. I, what I'm trying to have Vivian find is the actual like volunteer form that we have, when people wanna volunteer to fill out, because I haven't seen one. Turn it in in the last.
We have some of them.
Um, and, uh. As far as like when somebody resigns, like Dwayne. Um, because that's why it's passed around, was his resignation letter that he'd given me, um, a couple months back. There, there's no like written policy, that's like how we determine that, so I mean. I don't know if that's a matter of. Going to the volunteers and putting a notice out and saying who's interested in being this, and then I, I guess.
We can include it.
I can interview them.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't necessarily wanna be the person to make the decision for a second. But if I have, if, I mean, if that makes everybody feel like it's more equitable, and there's a process, um, and the committee's okay with it. I don't have a problem doing that, as long as it's helpful, I couldn't, that hasn't been. I haven't been given direction on how that whole process is set, of course, I've never. Had a volunteer resign from that type of a position, so it depends first.
I guess, Sandra?
Um, and, and I guess this would be more of a question to those volunteers now, would it make sense for this board to appoint an interim? Coordinator? Until such a time as, it, it doesn't sound. Like there was any process at any time to determine.
Hmm.
A coordinator, so right now there is no coordinator. So I, it may make sense to appoint an interim coordinator. Wow.
How many volunteers are formally working there?
They'd have a better idea, because my list is long.
There's no guarantee. There's no guarantee. There, there are five personnel and Diane, Diane and was, um. And, oh, David, Debbie, and Joe. Okay, so, so Saturday. Couldn't tell you that, so yeah. We had a little one Saturday.
But when Sarah went to the same crew for. Two years. Um, can we do, look, look out for each other, one of them came in. Then I'll call some replacements. Saturday crew was a big magnet people. Uh, Wayne sent me messages asking, so there's so many crew that come in on Saturdays. Uh, so right now. The Saturday crew is in, in flux, which hurts the whole situation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the coordination, if you read some of the rules here, it says, uh, uh, volunteer works once a month. Well, flying, flying weren't very.
That's not, you know.
And they're very dedicated to what they do, and we take very good care of the place, uh, I said it. Now, I just tell you stories about, uh, I had a, a young lady come in, and there was a double, uh, baby carriage there. And she wanted the worst way to share the weekend and hold, and we took her home to her, um, so we do a love me on. Many stories like that, feel this stuff, um, that keeps me going back, yeah. I know, but. But, uh.
Very feel good job.
Yeah, we'd like to see something done.
Well, that I nominate Dawn Barry is the, uh, swap shop chairman, there. I'll second that.
You sure you know what you're getting into?
Anyways. It's like, it's, it's very easy fix. Uh, put people together, uh, there's gotta be some people get mad about it, but, uh. That's always the case, uh, so we might lose a few volunteers, but. Not because we're pushing them up, because.
Correct.
Well, it's the way they do it.
But, I mean, I think I was. Not so clear, but pretty much getting at it, it didn't seem like there was much. Um. Commute, well, there wasn't any communication really, I mean. You came, you come in and give us donations, and I probably should, it, it seems like every time you come in, I'm, they're like, here's the donations, and I'm like. I don't even know what it looks like. So. I, I think having. Someone and having direction will help all of you, so that. And us communicate better, so that I can know if there's something that's going on, that we can. So I own my part in that, because when, like I said, when, when Dwayne resigned, I, I just didn't know what to do, um, and then. We were supposed to have a couple of solid waste meetings and things happened, and. We were never able to, so this was our first opportunity to really give you some direction, and I didn't wanna go over anybody's head. And make a decision, you know, you know, by myself, so. Thank you, guys.
Would you guys be able to start accepting gloves and hat donations? Would you guys be able to start accepting gloves and hats? Okay. Be able to accept clothes and hat donations, but.
One morning.
I do, uh, my name's Kristen Chapman, and I'm Joel's wife, um, and. I do know that there are two ladies who are directly involved in the fundraising event for the swap shop, and. Before an interim person is, is, uh, nominated. I just would ask, did everybody know that this meeting was taking place tonight, so that they had a chance to attend, so? One woman, um, is disabled, and she has a hard time getting out, but she really spearheaded the fundraising effort. So just in, in that goodwill effort, I feel that they should be made aware that there are nominations being considered for this position.
So we did average.
Yeah, it was replaceable.
Yep. Um. But I, I don't wanna exclude anyone either, we want all, you know.
I'm looking at, would, am I mistaken to say that there was already, uh, uh, nomination and a second vote taken? And I'm gonna vote out.
And vote. We're in acceptance and discussion phase.
Didn't get a second.
We get a second, I second that, yeah. Yes ma'am?
Well, for discussion, would it be possible to interim the position for the next six months? And then, right, open it up?
Yeah, and I believe the intent was interim. Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was a kitchen through.
Yes, and stability, the interim, and go for it.
Yeah, so we have a contact. Yeah. Makes sense to me.
Do not step.
We don't wanna step on anybody's toes. No, we wanna be inclusive.
Six months would bring us right to roughly the. Sticking policy change, sticker change. Yeah, but, but we're supposed to meet at least, this is twice, twice a year. This is our second one for twenty. Three, I put here, we have twenty-three. So, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be right around just before election.
So Wilda knew about the meeting tonight? Nino?
What? Wilda? There hasn't been clear communication between a Saturday and Wednesday crews, so we can't be concrete enough.
On the other end, Carol, Carol was on Facebook. And she gives you, she started posting, posting on Facebook, and it was noticed on Facebook, and. It's moment. Will would know? Carol being Will's daughter. My life was, he doesn't want to bother to do it, and you're watching. Well, there you go.
Does anybody know if she follows the Buckfield page, because I did post the Zoom link and everything on, on Facebook as well.
Yes. Yeah. Public homes.
I'm sorry, Sandra, go ahead.
So the way. The way this is written now, and it would be my understanding that written policy should be followed.
Mm-hmm.
That. This may. Want to, people may want to amend this. Before six months is up, I'm not sure this is. So. Will there be a, a meeting a. Again, and could. Could the interim positions, because I, I understand. But. There are, um, two groups. And it would be a shame to lose. Any people who are dedicated.
Volunteers.
But, um. It, what's the thought with, is that, but when will you meet again to go over this, and could the interim position? Be until. That meeting, that meeting? Um.
Yeah.
There's nothing, I think that's a good suggestion. There's nothing saying you guys can't schedule another meeting.
Right, right.
You know, less than. Uh, it's just. We had to get to this point first.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we do it all the time. I. That would give us some time, we could get together with the group and kind of nail down some of these rules. Guidelines, I guess. To clarify this document a bit.
Do we have a contact list for the vol, all the volunteers? That's what we really need, I think, is actual volunteers.
I have this. Which is a list. But there's notes for certain, certain people and. We just have to go over it. I think some of the notes are based off availability, I, I don't know if some of those aren't. Current anymore, and they don't volunteer anymore, it really, it would be nice to sit down with as many volunteers as I can. In an informal meeting setting and just kind of. Understand this.
There are people who can sometimes stop. And are, are like regular volunteers, and to. Like, if I'm not gonna give you, at least you'll try to find somebody to stop for.
But we did, you need some way to track the volunteers, whether they can.
Well, and, and that's the other thing, and, and I don't. And again, I, I hate pushing volunteers, because, you know, I, I get it. Uh, it would be nice. If all the volunteers that currently volunteer could fill this thing out again for me. And if you need copies, I can give you more, uh, just so that I can keep a spreadsheet, and then as, as people. Leave or can no longer do it, or don't wanna do it, I can update that, so that I have a current, um. Roster of people that are interested in it. Alright, because that, honestly, that list was the first time I'd ever, I'd ever. Seen names.
Hmm.
I seen a few faces over there, but.
So if. There might be amenable to set another, another meeting date to get the volunteers together, and we can. Kind of meet.
Certainly, but, uh, we still have a motion on the team.
Oh yeah, we do have. Uh, we wanna, uh. Trying to be the best way to handle that.
Maybe just, uh, uh. Um, amend it to nominate an interim, uh, leader.
Yeah.
Until we meet. Two months from now.
Yep, yeah, I was trying, just trying to come up with a date.
You have to call the next solid waste.
Alright, so.
I don't think Dawn's on the list.
I think so, I, I do, so I can afford it.
Doesn't say, I think, I think. And Dwayne, and you might have been the ones tracking it, I'm not sure, I.
Can we put it together? He's calling, he's using his own experiences.
But the date has not been set yet.
Yeah. So should I add that to the motion?
If you wanna get it all done in one motion, come after we watch the video to figure out what's.
Just to add that we're going to. Select an interim leader until the next meeting, and we'll set that date.
So the motion was to appoint. Dawn in an interim basis until your next meeting, which will be on.
That's what I was looking for, so.
It would be Sumner's turn to, um, straight?
Yeah, yeah.
So you guys would probably want it on a day that you already have a select board meeting, we can just catch up with you before that, yeah?
Yeah.
We can get through the holidays.
Yeah. Who do you prefer, like February or March, you know?
Two.
Um, I don't have a preference.
What's your meeting night, Wednesday, Tuesday? Oh, right, that's the opposite Tuesday. Right, so that would be thirteenth of February, which I think is school vacation week, probably, isn't it?
I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Or the twenty seventh of February.
What's that in February?
Yeah, twenty seventh of February.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And then what time do your meetings typically start?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Should we plan to meet at five thirty before then or should we do the same thing we did with this meeting where you guys will just propose that your select word meeting follow the ways.
If we do it at six, people trying to get off work can
Yeah.
get there.
Okay.
And then, uh, I think it'd be very informative for the
Yeah.
town as well.
Okay, so six o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty seventh of February.
You'll have to pull up a fire truck for this.
Yeah. Luckily, I included that all in my original motion. Christ, I can do that. Your motion, okay.
The time, the times of that meeting attempt?
Six P M.
Six P M.
Do you wanna set a snow date to your motion?
Twenty seventh, so your next meeting would be March twelfth after that. That'll be the snow date.
Sure.
So, I'm motion.
All right.
See, it was stills motion actually.
Oh, yeah. Also, you gotta amend your motion.
Oh, sorry.
That's disgusting.
Discuss. Let's discuss, yes. Solid there, sorry. And Don's willing to accept that? Any further discussion before we move on? Great, all in favor? Bye bye.
Julie, I.
Daniel, I. Jesse, I.
Unanimous. Thank you all. That's wonderful.
I'll, I'll post it on Buckfield's Facebook and Buckfield. Well, when I post it on Facebook, it goes through. I'm not sure. Is anybody able to update the summer setting right now?
Yes, oh yes, we have.
Alright, thank you, everybody. That's great. Next on the agenda is days of operation. This is always, this comes up every time. I like it. Yeah, it works for me, but I know some folks it doesn't. It's I It's always been Wednesday, Saturday, right? So.
It's also always been red stickers.
What I have to say to that as the person has to deal with the employees, I don't say deal with the employees, but you know, um. We've got four, five that work over there. Before anybody would recommend changing days, you know. Maybe they can't do another day. Maybe those are the two days that they can work. And we don't have a lot of people beamed down the door in a port of transfer station two days a week, so that's something that people need to consider as well.
I know when our town office has a change, it throws everyone and just got institutional knowledge in the, in the, I'll tell you. I'm in favor of just keeping things the the way they are.
Our town office closes on Monday for years and people still call every Monday and
Yep.
I suppose that was on the sign up front. It doesn't matter.
So, the days of operation on Wednesday, Saturday, go for that. What are the hours right now? You know, off the top of your head.
And, and they're usually, they're usually there earlier, but I, I'm pretty sure the gates usually open before eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it was seven thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never had to wait and I get there early. Saturday mornings on my way.
Oh, and the way it's presently worked is if the transfer station loses power and it's gonna be an extended period of time, I usually get a phone call and I just I, I tell them to close down because there's no point in those guys sitting there. They have no heat, no heat to have, so like the heaters. So, if we have no power, I'm not gonna let those guys freeze.
Yeah.
What do you do about the bathroom when your heat is powerfriced?
Unfortunately, we've never lost the power long enough to have an issue. Never say never. It's water.
There's still water in here before.
So, everybody's.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody, alright. And scheduled next, next meeting we just did.
Done.
Yes.
Wow. We're killing it.
Hey, that's been easy.
Oh, no. So, anything else you had wanna talk about before we adjourn? Just to, we kind of put together a brief.
Brief?
Yeah. We felt like it was brief at the time. You know, you, you can always email us if there's something else you wanna add it on there, you know. Like.
And now.
Your select word meeting, don't you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now that I have a contact email through to you, that makes things easier too, because I never had, I, I didn't know how to get in touch with the selection in the summer, so. It was, it was pretty difficult communication wise, but it's, it's been great. Cool, the last couple of months, so if I have anything for you guys, I'll share it with you and
Awesome.
Appreciate you need anything from us, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Anyone else that's been willing to help.
Absolutely. Yeah, it was nice meeting you. Nice meeting you folks. Thank you very much. This is wonderful, really.
Let's see.
Yes.
Or maybe more. Jeff Jinks does.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn. Seven twenty nine, all those favor, bye bye. There we go, we're adjourned. We're moving into select this meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, swap shop volunteers, I just wanna say a personal thank you to all you guys. And it's really, uh amazing, uh, just how many people you guys have, uh, over the years. And, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Sandra, the, the camera is not catching you.
Yep.
We'll call the meeting to order in a second, Judy. We're, they're off in the hallway right now, so we're just waiting for it to come.
Could Sandra move down a little bit so we can see her?
She's not here in the room.
What? No, wait, I mean, her, she wasn't visible before either.
Cause she wasn't at the table.
Oh, I thought she was.
Yeah.
She's not on the, the solid waste committee.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard her talking. Okay, my mistake.
Any comments, Judy?
There are agendas.
Okay. Sorry, I went to email you. I'm shaving paper. I'm printing by now. Oh, well, I made you another copy. No, that's this is thicker.
And do you think?
Okay, we're good.
As long as Judy can hear. Yeah.
I can't see you though, Cam.
I can't get all of us, so I figured you can see the selectmen and I'll sit in the background.
Okay.
All right, we'll call this meeting the Buckfield Select Board to Order for December fifth, twenty twenty-three. At seven thirty-five P M. And we do have a call. Bold business. The Long Free Library Trust termination.
So I just put this in here as an information portion, which I probably could have just chopped up in my town manager update, but. If you look at the list of table items, it's now one less. Because I got a copy of the order to terminate the Zadok Long Free Library Trust. That was recorded with the Registry of Needs. Eleven twenty, so the town of Buckfield is officially. Officially legally and everything taking ownership of. All the assets that were given to us by the trust, and now we can legally utilize that to continue to run the library. So.
Fantastic.
I'm happy to put that behind us. That's all that was.
All right. New business, the consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Perfect. Any discussion?
Causable warrant fifty-four includes a lot of our annual debt service payments as well as the school payment.
Okay. All in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I.
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Unanimous, thank you. The total on net two hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars twenty-two cents. Town manager update.
We'll get to that. What was the motion in the second? Sorry.
I made the motion. Sandra, second.
Thank you.
Well. You don't change news.
So November was busy processing the first half tax payment throughout the month of November. Through November thirtieth, we've collected one million three hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty cents of the. Two hundred, sorry, two hundreds, two million nine hundred ninety-five thousand. That was committed roughly. General administration revenues are looking great. Interest earned on operating cash has already reached almost nine times what we projected for the year, thanks to the newly implemented interest rates. We still have one more month of the first half of the year to go, so. That'll just be even higher. Motor vehicle excise tax collection is already over fifty percent. So we're projected to go over budget or over projected revenue on that as well, which is also good. Our office assisted residents of Sumner Motor Vehicle Registrations and I F and W transactions as their town office searches for new town clerk. I spoke with Sue Rinus last week and let her know that we will continue to help out however we can. Today, we assisted them a couple of times in trio. It's it's nice to be on the other end and. Be able to help somebody else, especially after a lot of people helped us while we were in the situation we were in, so. We're we continue to help out Sumner however we can. I included November's revaluation project update for everyone who needs. It was explained to me by the data collectors that they were done with their initial. Go out and collect everything that they could. People who weren't home. Or weren't available to do an interior. Either interview or an interior inspection. Should hear from K R T in the next month or so about scheduling callbacks, so people shouldn't be worried about that. After all that. Well, while this is going on and after all that information has been gathered, they're going to enter all that into. The Patriot software that we use for assessing once this is all complete. And then values will be set, then there'll be a favorable appeal, so if people have issues, they can appeal it and have those discussions and go through all of that. Lovely work that you all are going to be involved in. They're they have one data collector that went around last week. He did commercial properties. So he probably did Dilton's. I know he did the school, the probably the churches and stuff and like the hair salon. I think he finished up with all of that, so all of that's been taken care of. And then a brief note about the library trust, I think I already covered that, so I don't have to go over the gifts. Kathy sent me her library, her library report. Unfortunately, well, didn't have time to send me hits because he was plowing. Rescue and fire have opened pretty good these last couple of days here, so I didn't have them too much, so hopefully I'll have a report from them at the next meetings. I think that pretty much covers everything. And if anybody wants to read Kathy's report or K R T's report, it's all posted on the website right now under the board package.
They're very fast with that revaluation, huh? Holy smokes.
They're ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
But I don't want to get my hopes up, you know, I mean, you never know what could cause a bump in the road, so I'm still. Optimistic that everything will be done. We've gone through the appeals process and any issues we'd have to. Before the next commitment, that's my ideal goal. But it's sort of like the fire truck, you know, we said we'd have it in May. We just got it today. Oh, yeah, that's another thing. We have fire truck today. It's in the station. It won't be in service for a little while because they have to. Bring in a contractor and do training. We do have a few people that are qualified to use it. Jesse Hutchinson works for Auburn. Ben works for mechanic phone, Ferris, and a million other places, but they have experience on that, on that piece of equipment. I have experience on that equipment, but I'm not going to be driving it around. But so once everybody's trained up, people start to see that more and more. You know, and if people see it up on the road. You have to do, you know, people have to sign off on it. They have to be able to operate it, so we have to run it in order to be able to sign people off, so. Let's get ahead of that before anyone wants to know why it's on the road so much. We've got a whole roster.
Yeah.
And I've got a whole roster of people that need to. Not only drive it, but. We need to find creative ways to put the ladder up and. And the.
Training.
Training.
Yep. So absolutely. Thank you very much. All right, approve the minutes from the November twenty-eight, twenty-three. Select Board meeting. I see something.
So I made a mistake. I've identified it and I corrected it. I I I put his name instead of Songar's name, but they wasn't here and Songar was, so I've corrected on my notes, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November twenty-eighth. Select Board meeting with corrections that have been made.
I'll psych a petition. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, bye-bye.
Oh, you've always helped me. Sandra, I.
She was, she was like.
That's right, so there.
Three, okay, hold on.
I don't want them to say she was here. Yeah, we're all waiting for it.
Well, now you got me looking at to make sure I didn't put Heather down. No, you're right. All right, we're good.
All right. Committee appointments.
I don't know about this one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ruby Seer to the Recreation Committee. I'll second that motion. One year.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I. Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Call your eye. Call she Ruby.
Thank you. Emergency management. Have our emergency management director here. Hi, Viv. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I read your report. Thank you. All right, the. NIM system, National Incident Management System.
Resolution.
Oh, yes, that's the resolution. That's right. I saw that again.
We have one signed by previous board. Which obviously this really should be reevaluated every.
Every year annually, yes.
Every year, but I think the last one was from twenty nineteen. It only had two signatures at the time. We now have five members. It's probably good that.
Yep.
Revote on it and and sign it so that it's permanent.
I expect this is standard wording from the.
Yeah.
FEMA, yeah.
Put them in the packet backwards, it appears, I'm sorry.
All right. Yeah, I don't see who it needs to be changed.
This is pretty much verbatim from the original one, right?
Yeah, I made no changes in the one from Oxford County. There's two resolutions. One is for us locally, one is for Oxford County because they. Are required by the state of Maine every five years to update their plan and staff. It's also important for. Any assistance we seek in the future should need to be from either the state or FEMA. It's just a. Good thing we can.
Yep, gonna have it lined up, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution for National Incident Management System as written.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Call in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I. Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. The Oxford County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Twenty twenty-three update resolution. Also here.
So they just went through their five-year review, you know, that's required. They're. Waiting. Technically waiting for end approval. I don't see anything like that where they don't seem crazy quiet, it won't be. If it's not updated. Via the federal guidelines. And once that approved, but the official public gets back to them, they will send us a whole copy. To every county in Maine, including Bussio. So we'll have a copy of that. These are small pieces. I'll just, as as the emergency management team, I just wanna. Say that these are small pieces, but vital pieces. Pieces in that they'll start to fall in place in in your brain when you start working. On our plan, little by little.
Yes, I know.
So, did you make a motion? You.
I made no motion.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the Oxford County Hazard Mitigation Plan to twenty twenty-three update.
I will second that motion.
Any discussions? All in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I. Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. And thank you, Viv. This is great work. It can be, I know it can be tedious at times, but. It pays off when you need it.
That's what we hope, that's the end goal. We all said we're going to be solid.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
All right, I must vote quickly indeed. For sixty depot street.
So this is one of those tax part properties that you sent a letter out. Gave them an opportunity to just upcarrying and then. They had requested additional time the board granted. Properties since all the taxes have been occurring. So. We just need to approve the signing and the deed so that I can record it with county and. We're all good. Oh, shoot.
Get the stamp. Sign this one too, right?
Probably. Is that the Oxford County version?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
The first one going around is one packet, and then this is the second one. Oh. I have two signage papers. First two fire E M A. Okay. Oh, yeah, I should follow lead to some of the toys.
Yeah.
Yeah, so many more. No worries. We'll get back to it. Sorry, just the following one.
Depending on how it's spoken. Everybody wrote their D R A.
Yes. Is it much to execute? Okay, so I'll make a motion to execute the quickly indeed for sixty depot.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Amend plumbing permit P A one three six two. We're going to trace over this. Is this that one?
Oh, you probably want some explanation on this, huh?
Hey, I was reading here. It's like, can I change contractors or something?
Yeah, so typically if you get a plumbing permit and you decide. To either use it, utilize a different contractor, or you go from doing it yourself to utilizing a contractor. You have to come in and transfer the permit, which is only a ten dollar fee. This property owner came in and got a permit and then his contractor got a permit for the same job. So basically, they both paid for the same job when he should have just paid for a ten dollar transfer fee. So I included Kingston's email so that you could. Make sense of it, but from what I gathered from what he said, it sounds like. The board just needs to vote to amend that P A thirteen sixty-two. To a transfer permit for the ten dollars and then I can go. And request the refund from the state on their portion because I've already paid the state. Their fee, so in order to recoup what we've already paid him, I gotta. Get your authorization to amend it. There was a question about number of fixtures. Yeah, so the contractor and him had a different number. Kingston confirmed the number and. So they still needed the ten dollars for the transfer. So the total refund from the local and state side is, I believe, a hundred and twenty dollars. Is what he's owed back, but I, which the local stuff's easy enough for me, but it's. The ability to recoup the the state's portion is what they owe us.
I will make a motion on the plumbing permit P A thirteen sixty.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, bye-bye.
Cecilia, I. Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right, committee board organizations liaisons. I've been horribly derelict at this myself, so.
It's sorry, I actually asked me, I was at the store question about something or somebody came in and asked me, I should remember what it was, but and then I started thinking, oh, we're good. And then I was like, you know what? I don't know if I have this correct, so. I printed out what I've. Had on a previous set of minutes from months ago, and I just figured you can go through this and correct it needs to be corrected and adjust because. Peter kind of just got what was left.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know, if there's anything that needs to be changed, I'd like to get that noted so that I can. Update it and properly have it saved on the server, so.
And Heather had. I was assigned the beautification committee, but then Heather came on, so. And is part of the beautification committee, so that was the one thing I noticed. Do you want to trade a committee again?
Yeah, I don't see which one. It just doesn't really make sense. For somebody else to have beautification when I.
Yeah, for sure. I can, I'll, yeah, if you, I'll take the ordinance development committee off your hands.
Okay, yeah.
How about that?
Anyone else have any notes on?
Guys want to swap around at all, or are you satisfied with what you've got, or? I have to say, I've been horribly derelict at this. I need to make better contact. That's for sure.
Had a school board member and a super here at the last meeting.
Yeah, it's been the shot of super stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take. Credit for that.
Have you even got Rufford School Board Member to come in?
Yeah. All right, we're all set. Let me. There we go.
Peter, do you have any questions about the period you have? Can I make a suggestion? And I can provide you with this, but. Some of these. Like, so Row Committee really meets once every twice a year. Budget Committee pretty much. Peter's on top of scheduling meetings, so he doesn't really need a reminder to hold meetings. For for budget, planning board meets regularly, community events meets very regularly. Aren't you on that committee too?
I am, but I don't know. I don't know how long I'll stay on like a day. I think I signed up for a year and I'm not super. Involved.
Got a lot on your plate.
So, yeah.
Correct, I mean, we meet. We meet every other month and then as needed, plus, I mean, resorts and stuff are there, so we don't really need a reminder unless somebody wants something specific. I don't need to tell them beautification.
Yeah, it's just me and Connor. I'm not doing anything right now.
Well, yeah. Springtime, get plenty of things. Old church on the Hill Committee. Because they really need to meet.
Yeah.
A gentleman brought in. A piece of one of the windows. Crims the other day, ground the window way up on the bell tower and, you know, I'm sorry. You need to fix this. I don't know how to fix it. So it would be nice if the. The old church on the Hill Committee could kind of.
I'll send out an email tomorrow and. Or need to time.
It would be Everett.
Everett, Corey, and.
Yeah, Irons, Burke Irons. Obviously, the BBC, we have no control over they meet regularly. So if that's as simple as emailing Glenn and asking for an update, he'll come in anytime if he wants, you know. Library Committee, they meet regularly. Ordinance Development, there isn't any members right now, so I don't remember the last time they met. Appeals Boards as needed, Social Services, they meet once a year. And Economic Development. They haven't really met. Since Janet passed away. So I don't really know what's going on there. But this group committee, we just. Yeah, they're just not meeting regularly, so that's an update of where I'm at with all the committees. Most of them are doing pretty well. We got a question.
Oh, yes, Judy.
Although it's not a town committee, is somebody monitoring the BBC? I I did notice that our president now wants all lead pipes replaced within ten years. I just wondered if there were any. Anything. You know, go on.
Heather's Heather's the liaison for the BBC. With that said, if that's a law that's passed, I would hope that congressional congressionally delegated spending would be appropriated to replace these seven million dollar projects. Because I can't imagine the ratepayers in Buckfield can afford that. But this is my thing. I don't think I missed any committee.
Yes, Viv.
That was a good review, Cam. I will just give you the heads up. Earlier, I spoke with Heather and about the BBC. And hopefully Judy can hear me. I've had, as E M A director, I had to contact them about the North Pond Dam and. You'll get more information on that as it comes, but the long story short. To save time. You're probably going to go to the January meeting and I'm going to give you exactly time, although it might be in the report. I can't remember at this point. But the reason why this is critical is because as part of the emergency operating plan and and as part of. Local mitigation planning. We, we, the E M A team. Have to work together and have to document that we've worked together. One of the critical. One of the critical changes coming down from the federal level to the state level to the county to the local level is in in incorporating into the hazard mitigation plan, for example, climate change. So I was thinking, oh, I'll gonna like get a whole. But, it, so now, if I reach out to you and say, oh, you know, like Heather, I have a scheduling conflict, can you get to this meeting because I'll be at the other meeting? So even though one committee might only meet one time a year, social services might have to have three meetings, this, you know, whatever, I'll let you know, I'll keep you posted, but thank you for doing this. There's a whole team effort, right?
You bet. All right, we're all set with that?
Thank you. That was, you just changed it.
Sorry. Buckfield-Sunder Solid Waste Agreement, we just had a great meeting discussing that.
Now I will make a motion that we, uh, approve the Buckfield-Sunder Solid Waste Agreement.
I'll second that.
It's running here and a half, maybe some.
Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor, bye bye.
So I, other I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
You know, there's things to take off that.
Yep.
There you go.
Bingo.
So you know that, yeah, once you sign your section, I'll drop that off in summer so that they can sign their portion, hopefully next week.
Other business, I did create that letter and certificate, but I left it working. So Sandra knows.
Thank you.
Yes, I will email it around as soon as I get back to work.
I think we can take care of it at the next meeting.
Yes.
Is that the new Robert James?
Yes. And public comment period. Please, any public comment, yes, Viv?
Sorry, it's not a comment, it's a question on on that list, on the back. The in process was number ten is grant policy creation. Could you tell me who who is given that, or or is it, is it the board as a whole? Or is it a specific person? For, we don't know yet.
I can't remember how we, I'm not sure why it says, do we need a grant policy? Or were we just looking at?
This was brought up, there was an incident in another town where grants applied for, yeah, so.
Oh, yeah.
And and there really, there really isn't much of a, I mean, like, every year, a fire department applies for the main forest service grants, and there are the little, the little grants here and there. But we don't really have anything in writing as far as like can a department head apply for a two million dollar grant with a fifty percent match?
Yeah, I remember that now, we were gonna look at a a way, a way that we could, uh, approve that grant process, right, so they would, they would essentially come through the through the select board to say yes or no, proceed with this.
It basically sets a a guideline, you know, like, for, you know, what's the, what are the guidelines for, can you, can a department head apply for a no match grant, you know, like that, you would still have to accept if we were awarded it, but the town's not liable, well, unless there's specific terms with that grant that could affect us. Um, you know, so just kind of outlining that, and and, you know, if they're gonna apply for a grant, at least bring it to me to review, and if I have questions, bring it to you to review, like, if it's something that could be, you know, but, I mean, like the main forest service grant, we've done that every year, it, you know, there is a small match, but I don't think it's ever anymore, it's it's budgeted for in their budget.
Yep.
Um, there is a reserve account for fire department grants, which hasn't been used in a few years, not a ton of money in it, but there's a little bit there, so, um, now that we know how we have to vote on our reserve account funds.
Yep.
In order to expend it, um, and that's at least covered, so if we ever want to use that money to be the match for something like a small grant, um, I believe they're working on now, they didn't get award, they applied for Stephen King grant and didn't get it. So she's including some of the information from what they were applying for on the main fire service side. Uh, but other than that, there's not a ton of grant writing going on, um. It it's something that the fire department in particular should probably book in here soon, because I think we get seven airbags in town. It's not a whole lot, um. So, you know, that's a potential, a lot of our bunker gear is getting to its end of life. Um, I'm probably gonna have to budget a higher amount to replace some of it, and we do have new people, I can't send firefighters, interior firefighters into a building that's not compliant, and that is a safety risk. The solution is, if we get there and could have gone in to save something, and we can't, I mean, it's, I can't, so. But those are usually the things that we would write grants for, you know, bunker gear and and airbags and whatever other tools that, you know, if we can get money for that we don't have to tax for is great.
Yes, Sandra?
So I didn't realize that there wasn't something in place for grant, I I I think that any grant should go through the town manager.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the board, and then the next piece would be at what point do we, or what would be the parameters that we would want the town manager to bring it to the board?
Uh-huh.
Um.
Right, if it's unbudgeted, it would, we'd have to appropriate funds toward it, then we would certainly have to be involved to approve that.
But it
Yeah.
If the library wanted to apply for a grant for two hundred dollars for books, is that something that should, should every grant have to come through this body, or but some grants?
Yeah.
Right, should there be an amount, should it be if something's going to be matching, should it be?
Well, and I think the big thing too is, is like, if you're applying for a five hundred dollar Walmart grant with a fifty percent match, and it's budgeted for, I think the key thing here is anything that would be awarded needs to be within the scope of your budget, you can't exceed your budget or expend your budget before the end of the year to to receive a grant, I mean, at the end of the day, a big grant, you guys technically, you guys should be approving every grant that comes in, um, even if it's for two hundred dollars. Has it been done that way in the past? No, but I'm just bringing this to light, because she brought it up.
Yes, Viv.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, because the town hasn't had a revenue policy, a reserve fund policy, a grant policy, and if we can get on board quick enough, like maybe even by April first, uh, I'm gonna try really hard. The budget process is gonna start next month. Some of the federal grants deadlines are March twenty twenty four. The state deadlines may be different. Federal has maybe different requirements, state doesn't, but regardless, I don't feel, I personally, just because it is who I am, who I am, would bring that to the board. Um, but I don't wanna spend time searching through all of this and then bring something and then say, oh, well, that's out of the parameters or whatever, so if we have the guiding doc of a grant policy, it's gonna save a lot of time, and I'd be willing to help whatever person who's there wants to help try to write this. But I don't think I could do it by myself.
I get a pretty good draft of about fifteen seconds, fast. You know, and in the absence of, well, so we have revenue policy per se, but we kind of do, I mean, we don't unwriting, but we we vote on a proposed amount of revenue, and anything that exceeds that left us a fund balance, and it becomes part of the fund balance, so we can't expend any over revenue.
I I, the reason I said that is because it's all about, from from my perspective now is, and Bob, I think knows this, we have to document, 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 and prove that there's a framework and a structure that supports every decision going into there. It's kind of crazy, it's a, it's a formula, in the long run, for every, I'm trying to think, for every six dollars, this is, this blew my mind, for every six dollars we spend, for example, on mitigation, we could potentially save forty thousand, because we can apply for all the different assistance.
Yep.
But we have to follow the formula.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And what I was gonna say on the grant aspect of it, until you all decide what that policy is, or having that policy written and approved, is the the expectation, which again, I go back to the the fire service grant, if they're applying for a fifteen hundred dollar grant with even a twenty-five percent match within the scope of their budget, there's no strings attached, other than they have to buy what they said they were going to buy, I don't think I should have, or I don't, I don't think you should have to be bothered with with something like that. So, I mean, the the basis is if it's outside the scope of your budget, you can't do it without select board approval. I mean, does that make sense to me?
Yeah, it does, yeah, especially now that all agree.
If your budget's two hundred thousand dollars a year, that doesn't mean apply for a four hundred thousand dollar grant with three million thousand dollars, especially still have things. Big, but, right, you know. I am typically notified of the little grants like that when they come in, I I I cannot cite a time in our, since I've been here, where somebody has applied for a grant that I wasn't aware of. Uh, the only ones we've got, that I've been told about, or that I know we've gotten, were the the main forest service grants, which I'm, it's not anything pretty much good, it's fair. Uh, but outside of that, nobody's running around applying for fifty thousand dollar match grants, and I'm having to figure out where I can pull that money from.
Yeah. Yes, Sandra?
Um. So what do we need to do to put the policy in place right now to safeguard ourselves that no grant should be applied for without first, at least going through the town manager? Until we get to the point where we have a complete policy.
Hmm.
I think that's our stopgap measure right now.
Yep. Yes, Viv?
I do know that there is a budget committee coming up and the budget process, and there's the M M A manual that has some information in there on grants and what the technical legal parameters are, and under all, obviously, you could do it. Is this something that could be taken to the upcoming budget meeting that they could maybe draft within a month? Um, I mean, the whole, the whole purpose is to take stuff off a camera's plate, not put it on. I hear them jumping in, I can do it in fifteen minutes, so be it, but that, you know, I don't know.
Fifteen minute stuff, I I don't mind, it's the three hours of digging and researching that that bothered me, um. With that said, we do have a grant policy, it's called the Warren Article the Town voted on.
Again, local versus state versus federal.
But that's the towns, that's what the legislative body voted on. I'm I'm just saying, for, and I'm not trying to argue this, I'm just, I'm just saying, yes, we we need to work on this, but I don't think it's something we should just plot together in fifteen seconds either. So in the interim, we have what we voted on, um. If somebody comes to me and says, oh, we want a fifty thousand dollar grant, and I need twenty five thousand dollars, I wanna go, huh, guess again, and I'm gonna bring it to you, and you could decide what you're gonna do with it, um. But again, I mean, if you want me to, and somebody gets a two hundred dollar Walmart grant, and bring me a hundred dollars, and I'm gonna beat you, I will.
Needs to be brought to us, but at this point, anybody out there that is going to write a grant on behalf of the town that that grant, whether it's five dollars or five hundred thousand dollars, they should not do anything with that grant until it goes across your desk.
Hmm.
And then at at this point that you use your good judgment as to what should be discussed by this body, rather than.
And my suggestion would be that any, any matching, any grant that involves a matching portion that's over thirty five hundred dollars that I have to actually physically sign the grant application. And if it's over four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Yeah, that's already.
You have to vote for me to sign it.
But but these are all things, I think, that we need to put
in writing.
Right, but until that point can we just say now that if you're going to apply for a grant before you, if anyone in this town is going to apply for a grant, before they do, that needs to go across your desk?
Yep.
Hmm.
I mean, I would agree with that, for sure, I mean, I'll set my own policy internally until you come up with something.
That, that would be great.
Yeah.
And then, um, should that be sent to the committee chair people, if they're gonna be ready, grants, so they should know. Which I mean, all of them. Anyone that might get the idea to write for a grant on behalf of the committee.
Right. Like I said, the female one that I was looking at is due, the deadline's March first, twenty twenty four, and I'm thinking to myself, do I have time to do this, how can I make this fit into our budget process? Because that's not.
Well, I need to know about any matching stuff by February first.
Good job, I was just saying.
I, that's, that's the, I say February first, but my, whatever the days line up in February, that's when the budget committee's gonna start going over whatever I propose, and then by March is when I want it in the select board's hands for them to start talking about, so that we can have it done by April, so that we meet all the guidelines we need, and we can make sure that we have current ballots that we don't have to hand count.
Yeah.
I think it's.
I think last year's election went perfect, and we weren't here till six in the morning.
Do you, um, is it possible to follow up on what Heather just said? When you send out your request for proposed budgets to include a note about the grants, and then also send it out to the committees?
Well, and and here's, I have no problem sending something out to, you're drafting a letter and giving it to all of you to give to your committee, or email out to whoever, um. I don't foresee any of our committees writing a grant, because they're not municipal employees, or they're the people who are accepting these grants are gonna want somebody of authority at the town level signing off on that, so. But you, you have been appointed title as, I mean, I hope you you share information with me anyway, so obviously you and I are are in communication, but like Tom from the rep committee, who's the chair of the the rep committee, he's not gonna apply for grant, or he could apply for a grant, but it's not gonna be accepted without a signature from somebody at the town level. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So just, for that purpose, it's just a policy, you will write the internal policy that no grant will be written or sent in, people can write one, but until it's not across your desk, and then we as a body need to work on putting together a grant policy, I think, to get your input on what you think that policy should include, and then also asking the budget committee what they would propose. Um. So. That's you?
Yeah.
It's that's to put together what they think some of the language should be.
Yep.
In that policy, and then they can put all that together and and create a policy.
Let's see, I was, because I'm gonna be there on their meeting on the fourteen, and I mean, their focus is gonna be going on the, over the quarterly thing, but I can mention that to them as well, because I'm gonna be there anyways. But, uh. Maybe give them kind of like a a rough draft version like. We did with, uh, obviously they work on that too. Hate to bring it up, the municipal property use ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If we're gonna vote on an ordinance that needs to be done by June as well, it actually, it really needs to be done by April as well.
Yes, I at one point had sent out a draft, but did everyone have the chance to look over that?
I did, but it's gonna want help.
Don't worry. Did you get any information back from other tech? I was under the understanding that you were going to collect some. I've reached out to a couple towns, I'll double check my inbox, see what I ended up with.
Could you send that?
Yes, yes.
And even if it's a good base. Starting point, I think something is better than having nothing and then having a way to amend it as long as it's approved by by the town. I mean, even in the amendment portion, you know, giving a certain amount of authority to the select would add certain things to it. By majority voter or whatever. Having some things better than having nothing, cause when we do have issues. At least we have something on paper that says, hey, this is the ordinance in town and, you know, maybe. And the boxer county is not in the habit, it's been forcing local ordinances, but at least we have a leg to stand on.
Yeah.
As opposed to, oh, it's policy.
Right. So Sally, if you could let me know the towns that you reached out to, because. If you reached out to someone and they didn't send anything back, I don't want to reach out to them, the same people again.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
And Cameron, I'm sorry, can I ask for clarification with when an ordinance goes on the town board, it's shown reading? I think there's a different number of days, it has to be out the two public hearings.
I don't know what I can do, I can't remember, what would be. It does, I mean, we post, we post, I post the warrant typically thirty days out and well.
But it's an ordinance, I'm pretty sure it's all under a different.
Right, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying, we will do two public hearings like we do for the election, last year, we did what we did. Two in April, or do we do one? I can't remember.
Two for the marijuana ordinance, right?
We did two.
Yeah.
And that's typically the practice of the board is to have have. One on a weekday and one on a Saturday.
Yeah.
So we'll meet that guideline and I post stuff in advance before those meetings anyways, cause I wanna make sure. That we have everything in line for F T ballots and, you know, having all that stuff out there, so. Pretty, pretty good at making sure I get all that stuff done on time.
So it's around April.
Well, I'm gonna get it printed on ballot, absolutely, cause it it is a process to get all that stuff, that stuff added to it, we could always. It's not ideal, but if we have a warrant. That's printed, that can be read by the machine. And something comes up and we can still meet that timeframe, we can still have a separate ballot with that specific initiative on it. It's just more work, ideally, everything on the same ballot works. Um, while we're talking about. I hadn't heard back from the insurance company ambulance yet, uh, I don't know if it's gonna be a repair, if it's gonna be a a a. Cold.
Total, yeah.
I mean, I looked, I I went over really where it's at right now and I looked at it. The optimistic side of me says it's cosmetic and there's just a few things that could be done, but can't tell by looking at it, the frame's bent. Um, until the adjuster gets up there to do it. So, once that's done, I'll have an idea of what we're looking at, um. The original plant four fifty one was to order chassis and then have it remounted the box, that's on that invoice, force it in the box, it's fine. Um, it has some cosmetic damage from another incident, but that was something we were gonna address when we remounted it, there's no point. Fixing it now when they're gonna go through it anyways. So, since we know how we need to vote on our. Reserve accounts and how we spend them, uh, that may be something we want to start thinking about too, once we figure out what it's gonna look like, because. There's roughly. And I know it got, it got mixed up two years ago and Viv might recall it and I know Martha will, where a warrant article is written a certain way. But it was clearly said in public and at meetings and during the public hearings that. Money got put into the. Rescue equipment reserve that was intended to replace an ambulance, but it was all, this is why we shouldn't have two accounts for. Rescue and fire for equipment, they should install a lot, but anyways, between the two accounts, there's roughly a hundred and one thousand dollars. That could go towards whatever we have to do, um. Ideally, it'd be a new chassis. Take the old box. Re-detail it up, fix up any of that stuff, it'll have names, so run for ten years, eight years, eight years, we'll go date. Um, but I don't know what I'm looking at yet, I was asked about it today, so.
Right, this. The information, then we can make it.
I anticipate there's gonna be an article on. Something, cause as of right now, I mean, depending, I'm hoping they fix it. Because if they don't. We're down an ambulance. Last year's proposed revenue for rescue was based off of transfers, which we haven't done a lot of. Despite some of the things that have been said. Um, and. I don't want, I don't want rescue to 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 miss their revenue by a ton because of an accident. Um, but if it comes back, they're not gonna fix it, they're gonna total it, they're gonna give us X amount. We have to figure out how to work it just that. Or have a special town meeting to vote on appropriating that money. So, it's on your radar.
All right. Thank you. All right, unless there's anything else. No, no need for executive session, I assume? All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at eight twenty eight.
Second now.
Thank you, all in favor, bye bye. I'm great guy, Judy. Thank you, Judy.